Okay, what I think I'm gonna do is because of the way that we'll be handling the budget moving forward, won't impact the capital budget, I'm going to start the review of the capital budget. We will be using our binder at this point, which is tab 25, which is what Jamar had referenced at our hearing, it's the fold-out piece of the budget. Moving ahead, we will be using PDFs that will be updated and I'll explain how that will be happening. Okay, so Jamar, I'm gonna be turning it over to you for the capital budget. Is there anyone else from your staff that's gonna be joining, from city staff that's gonna be joining?
Yes, Stan, our project, capital project manager is going to be joining soon, hopefully.
Okay.
Let me just give him a quick text message.
Here, Stan.
Good evening.
There he is.
And I just wanted to let council know, we were all invited to attend review of the capital budget about a month ago, I was able to attend that meeting. So I thought it was very helpful, but we'll be reviewing everything that was discussed as far as they outlined for the use of the capital budget.
Thank you for that, Marcia.
And just Johani just joined us, so Johani, we're on using the binder at this point because there hasn't been anything that has been updated, it's tab 25 in your budget binder. Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to note, even though I appreciate Jamar that screen shares, I did get feedback from council members that sometimes it's very difficult on a zoom screen, depending on what kind of device you're using, to be able to really see the details. So that's why I think it's good that we use what we have available through hard copy. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. I have the spreadsheet up so that we can accommodate the real-time edit, as well as it's the most accurate and up-to-date information. Are you ready for me to start, Marcia?
Yes, you can, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll start at the top, we're in column Q on the screen share in your budget book, in the tab 25 pull-out page, and we're focusing the orange column 2022. Under the Community Development Department, the Trades Office and the PMI Office both. They both have vehicle leases that are budgeted at 20,000 each in 2022. This is a multi-year purchase of vehicles for both of those divisions. Under the IT Division of Finance, we have 150,000 budgeted for computer replacements. Since the height of the pandemic, we've kinda, we've transitioned away from purchasing computer towers, which was our previous default. They're much less costly than laptops and you don't replace them with the frequency that you do of laptops. But in order to enable a remote environment, we had to make the transition to laptops for a majority of our staff. As such, most of them have either been replaced or are still on back order, including orders that we placed back in January of this year. So we have reduced the line item for computer replacements in 22. Systems upgrade, 600,000, that'll cover the conclusion of the setup of the new general ledger and accounting system, which we are in the middle of and are planning to go live, at least in the finance portion on January 1. Under infrastructure replacement, we have 700,000.
Is the screen, but it wasn't the screen, it was this thing.
The total between Community Development and IT is the 1,490,000 that I mentioned during the hearing at the top of the hour. Moving on to the Fire Department, we have 55,000 budgeted for staff vehicle replacements. We have 190,000 budgeted for ambulance replacement. That's an increase of 5,000 over the previous year. Just to note, we budget to purchase at least one ambulance every fiscal year. We have 90,000 budgeted for equipment replacement under the EMS division specifically. Under the Suppression Division, we have 1.6 million budgeted for downtown station improvements. And Stan can elaborate that on that in just a second. Under Riverside, we have 382,000 budgeted under CDBG funding for those improvements. And then in their current year, we have under capital 1.4 million budgeted for the Ninth and Marion Station construction. We have not budgeted any CIP funding in 2022 for that project. The 4 million that you see reflected there is coming out of the construction fund that you all set aside money for some years ago, we're finally tapping into that funding. That funding is under Fund 43, but we needed to create a line here to be able to make those drawdowns next year. With that, before we go into questions, Stan, can you please elaborate on the 1.6 million for the downtown station improvements, please?
Yes, thank you, Jamar, and thank you, council. The 1.6 million dollars is allocated for the four downtown stations, including the EMS, to bring them up to better conditions. We will be working on heating, roofing, plumbing, kitchen upgrades, along with bathroom upgrades, considering these are firehouses in all essence. So we have the, we have plans to spend all monies in calendar 2022. The $382,000 Riverside Fire Station, we term it McKnight and Spring, is using CDBG money, and thank you Neil and Jamal for helping us there. And that also is for construction work inside the building. We have walls that need to be painted, we have building original kitchen, which is approximately 50 years old. So we're doing basic upgrades there as well. Thank you.
Yeah, former countertops in there, Stan?
Oh, they're not even, the four Mike is, has worn tremendously and it's, it's time.
Okay, council, I'd like to pause there if there are any questions on the fire and finance and CD. Maria, please.
Thank you, thank you, Yama. I would like to know if any money from the rescue plan can be used for the downtown for those, is that for the improvement of the downtown station?
We're using, we're budgeting capital funding for that while it could be. We have not yet allocated, we have not yet set aside any rescue plan funding for those purposes.
And what about for the Ninth and Marion Station? I know, I believe the administration talked about before using some of the rescue plan.
Yeah, so if I scroll down past Graphic Engineering, past Fund 31, which is our agency fund, you will find Fund 47, our rescue plan allocations that we have set aside so far. And that's going to be the last page of your CIP section.
And Maria, please note that $5 million has been allocated using ARP funding. You will find that in, on Jamar's screen in row 305, column Q. Thank you, Jamar.
Yes, for clarity, the 4 million, that's gonna come out of the Fund 43, right? For the Ninth and Marion?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Please, I don't mean to make your head spin. All right, moving on to Police. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Okay, moving on to Police. In 2022, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned, the cumulative cost of the fire projects of CIP in 2022 is 2,317,000. Just wanted to make that note to wrap that point up. Again, moving on to Police, under Patrol, our annual budget for patrol vehicle replacements, we have a 50,000 bump in there to 450,000 for patrol vehicles. We have 55,000 allocated for motorcycles. We have $128,730 allocated for the body cameras. We have 500,000 allocated for citywide camera upgrades. If I could take a pause to note, a reminder, last year, council awarded a contract to LDW, which updated kinda like the central nervous system of the camera network, which will now allow us to potentially expand on that. So we've put another half a million dollars in for citywide cameras. We have 75,000 allocated for repairs. Those are under the Special Services Division. We have 500,000 allocated for system and software upgrade. We have 125,000 under Patrol for the bomb squad robot. We have 80,000 allocated for simulators to include driving and shooting simulators and training for our officers. The Lexi pole system at 25,200. The radio room, front desk improvements, that work has been done, but we have a five-year commitment to pay off the costs of those upgrades, and that's budgeted at 25,200. The building, including evidence motorcycles and command vehicle improvements, or vehicle storage, rather, is budgeted at 45,000. Rifles, including armory improvements, is budgeted at 30,000. We've budgeted 500,000 for the beginning stages of the Pol barn administration building. Again, that project is going to provide, I think, our first standalone facility for police and help them to consolidate all of their various apparatus under one building.
As well as. May Jamar, Jamar, if I may, we are also going to house the, the Police Academy in the, into this building, and the Police Academy is a very well-respected academy in the Mid-Atlantic. And you have to commend the Police Department for having such an outstanding academy.
Thank you for that, Stan, I was. Just gonna mention that. So yes, we'll also house the Police Academy at that building. And then we have 175,000 allocated for the records and Quartermaster relocation project. For a total of $2,714,130 under the Police Department across Patrol and Special Services. With that, I'd like to pause for questions.
And again, we're looking at just police specific this time as far as the capital budget.
Counselors, Sepeda Freitas. Can't hear you, ma'am. You're coming in and out.
Is this better?
Yes.
Yeah, this is good.
Okay, so two questions, one, where, where's the Pol barn admin building located?
It will be located in the vicinity of the wastewater treatment plant. The city owns a parcel of land that was not used in that project.
Its office and Quartermaster relocation, is it relocated into that space?
That's within City Hall, I believe. Thank you for that.
Quick question, Yama, I'm sorry, how much we budgeting for the youth academy?
That's not budgeted under capital.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, thank you.
If you're referring to the Police Academy, the law enforcement training operation.
No, no, it's just the youth academy, I know, I believe last year someone it was budgeted about, maybe it was under the general fund budget.
That is under the general fund.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Moving on to public.
I'm sorry, I have my hand up. Regarding, let's see here, I think motorcycles, right? Did I say motorcycles?
You did.
Okay, so motorcycles, can you just explain that a little bit, break it down? $55,000, is that for the purchase of new maintenance of the existing? I, I think I remember that we received a grant for motorcycles, this is something separate?
This is separate from any grants, do we have the chief on the call?
I don't believe so.
Can we promote him? My understanding, and this is my, please, limited understanding, we can verify with the chief. They were looking into some more nimble vehicles that would be able to keep up with the dirt bikes and get down the alleys in a more efficient manner, is my understanding. But we can flag that one for follow-up, certainly. It's not for more of the, the big guys that you use for motorcades and that sort of thing, when we have the, like, president come to the airport kinda thing, it's not for more of those, is my understanding.
That's correct.
That is correct, Jamar Lucine, if you can envision instead of a Harley, if you can vision more of the born identity type of motorcycles that are, and Jamar's absolutely correct, but that's, that is what is necessary. We tried to do it this past year, but, but that is what is necessary for 2022.
Okay, and that cost of $55,000 is for how many bikes?
Two. Whereas a Harley would be 55,000 standalone.
Thank you, Stan. We'll move along to Public Works, the Garage Division. We have 500,000 allocated for street equipment replacement, 50,000 for PW Trades Vehicles, 100,000 for Parks Vehicles, 150,000 for weatherization across our garages, 210,000, I should say, for HVAC controls at the admin and garage buildings for PW. For a total under the garage of $1,010,000. Can we pause for questions there? I'm sorry, excuse me, I don't know why I keep touching. Stan, could you touch on the 500,000 for streets equipment?
The 500,000 is just to upgrade our street sweepers, some of our trucks, along with snow removal equipment.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council on just the garage line items? Thank you. The Shade Tree, we have budgeted 100,000 for additional urban forest maintenance and 150,000 for the Mount Penn Preserve, Never Sink Mountain Maintenance. Counselors, Sepeda Freitas, please.
This is an appropriate question for, because I know this is capital improvement, but did we, equipment that we received from the Downtown Improvement District? Where would that be located? Are there any upgrades to those?
We have put them in use, those, the equipment and, and a few of the pieces of equipment were, how shall I say, not, were, were less than okay. And we tried to use some of the sweeper, some of the vacuum trucks as well, so we're employing them. But the, in the two pickup trucks we are using, but the segways, we will be separating ourselves from.
Hopefully auctioning those. Awesome. Marcia.
Okay, because this is in my district and also in my backyard, could you just explain a little bit more about the Never Sink Mountain and the Mount Penn Preserve? How that money's gonna be dedicated for what types of services?
Working with Lester, and it is, it is part of the, the monies that the city has engaged in. It is just to ensure that the trimming is done correctly and some of the planning is done. And also, if you're gonna, if you're gonna see this, this coming week, week where we are doing additional plannings, a few of the items like that, that we will be a part of. And it's just, it's just things we need to do to keep, excuse me, my dog was barking in the background, I apologize. But it's just some, it's, it's, it hasn't really changed much, but yeah, it's, it's for the environmental protection of the hill.
Yeah, because one of the things I've noticed, especially with the large deer population, we're losing a lot of trees either to age or, and the new trees, so we may need to look at more forest management as far as how to keep the preserve really full of the robust trees.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Johani, are you, do you have another question, is your hand is still up?
I just lowered it, thank you.
Okay. Okay, back to Jamar.
Under the Parks Division of Public Works, we have 700,000 allocated for the Canal Street Skate Park. We have 150,000 allocated for Bear Park Playground and Sixth Anamity. We have 400,000 allocated towards the courtyard in eighth and 800 Penn Street, my apologies. I believe that is our matching portion. We have reached out to the department for a waiver, but have not yet gotten clearance on the waiver of a match for that 800 Penn Street project. The 600 block of Penn Street Courtyard, we have 100,000 allocated towards that, I believe, also a matching fund. I'm sorry, looks like. Under Parks and Playgrounds, we have 875,000 allocated. And then we have 50,000 allocated for existing parks, equipment repairs, and the ball field. Stan, if you would, elaborate on the 875,000 for Parks and Playgrounds. It's a robust investment in response to hearing the concerns of our counselors over the last few months, please.
That is, that is correct, and in Public Works, Cindy Kastner has been very instrumental working with the Rec Commission, narrowing down areas of concern. She's worked tirelessly with administration as well, as well. And we are not only including the $875,000, just the, the repairs of what is there now, but also doing additional repairs, additional expansions of parks. As good as Cindy on this.
Thank you, Stan. Moving into Public.
Maria, have her hand up, please.
Sorry, Yama.
Apologies, yes.
I believe some resources for the rescue plans also is gonna be allocated to.
Yes, absolutely, um, yes. And that's listed, I believe, at the bottom, the same section I mentioned before. But this is just the CIP investment in our parks and playgrounds, yes.
And I wanna add to that, because I think that's a good question, Maria, but having been on the Rec Commission since its formation, the one thing we've noted is our parks for years haven't received the necessary attention. We have a large park system with a lot of aging structure, so we're gonna need to make a lot of large investments. So it's good we have the rescue plan together with the capital improvement budget to be able to address all these needs.
Thank you.
Since you, and thank you, Maria, for bringing it up, just by way of reference, we're not covering the rescue plan allocations tonight. But we just want to note that on top of the, so you see here 3875 for total project cost. That's 3 million from the rescue plan plus the 875,000 from capital. So we're looking to put north, almost $4 million in park upgrades across the entire city through the end of the rescue plan.
Yeah, I just brought it over because I think we do for people to know that the, I've got the administration also using resources from the rescue plan for the parts on the creation department.
Yes, absolutely, um, yes. Message was received, and I respectfully emphasized that this was based on feedback from council as well as desires of the mayor for the city. The pub, are there any other questions, I'm sorry, for Parks, the Parks Division?
Say that again, Jamar, I'm sorry.
I was just double-checking on additional questions, I think Counselors, Helen and Cass.
Hey, thank you, I'm looking at the parks. And I believe I, I'm looking for reading iron.
A reading iron will be included in the, in the 875. And with that, I can honestly say that if you even seen the out years, we're, we're looking at 875 and 23. It's been very diligent with administration leading this charge on this. We, administration understands what we need to do and we're gonna get it done.
Okay, because I'm aware that there was a grant that was submitted for reading iron. So I thought that it might be, have its own line item, but maybe, you know, I'm glad to hear that it's being included in the 870, you say 875.
But I think to that point, Lucine, I think it would be helpful to see how that 875 is broken down with the different parks across the city. So if there's any way to be able to provide just detail before we pass the budget.
Thank you, Sam.
I'll, if you can give me 30 seconds. All right, I'll look into that one tomorrow, Counselors, Helenic. One thing to note, sometimes in the past, just putting in a grant application, a project would get added to CIP before we actually got the award and confirmation. So we're trying to put a stop to that. But I'll double-check to make sure that we haven't received an award, and if we have, we will make sure it gets uploaded.
Makes sense, thank you.
Under the Public Properties Division, unfortunately, we have not gotten much movement on the 100,000 that's currently. And unfortunately, we have not gotten much movement on um the hundred thousand that's currently budgeted for this year. So we wanted to put that back into next year and get some movement on um signage and entry points to the city. So we have a hundred thousand there. We have two hundred thousand allocated for Third and Spruce HVAC replacement. Um, as an aside, uh, it should be noted that recently council did award um for the gym HVAC to be fixed. This is for HVAC for the entire facility, just wanted to draw a distinction there. The Third and Spruce Roost Roof, we have allocated fifty-five thousand. The tenth and spruce building repairs um used by the B squad, that is uh budgeted at seventy-five thousand. Um, through great debate, we have um put in another round of funding for uh above-ground public bathroom at the Fifth and Penn intersection. Um, and and that's another one that Cindy um uh is really gonna push towards uh some sort of fruition. Um, so looking forward to that, we put in a hundred thirty thousand there. Eggleman's lower, Eggleman's larger pavilion repair, we have allocated one hundred thousand in funding for that. Um, the Fire Museum repairs and upgrades, we have budgeted two hundred fifty thousand for that. The city park pavilion repair. Um, that project did not move this year, so we've uh reallocated the funding for next year, twenty-five thousand. Um, City Hall Office upgrades, uh we have allocated fifty thousand. The City Hall HVAC, we have allocated three million. And this is um, the CIP portion, we have also allocated funding under the rescue plan, because we believe this project could cost north of six million dollars. Um, City Hall Roof, we have allocated two hundred thousand for repairs and twenty-two. The Conservancy Building Repairs, we've allocated fifty thousand. For the Northeast and Southeast Library Ceiling and Lighting Replacement, we have allocated one hundred fifty thousand. And uh I think Stan's gonna expound on that one a bit. And then for the main library security camera upgrade, um, that project is expected to cost a hundred fifty thousand. Um, the uh District Attorney Adams has provided, has committed, rather I should say, one hundred thousand of funding towards that project. Bronwyn secured that funding, um, so we're putting in fifty thousand from CIP um to get that over the finish line. And that's uh security cameras at the main library. We have ten thousand allocated for ceiling repairs at the main library. We have one million allocated for wall repairs at the pagoda. We have one hundred twenty-five thousand allocated toward uh Schlegel Pool, Schlegel Pool, any additional work done there. And then we have one hundred eighty thousand allocated for sidewalk repairs for city-owned property. With that, um, Stan, if you can expand on the library lighting replacement project, I mean, any, any others that please?
Um, first, I'd like to discuss the pagoda wall repairs. We had um a very successful um RFP walkthrough with, I believe it was twelve. Uh, structural and geotactical engineers to look at the wall, walls. And um, uh, so we hopefully by the uh beginning of December will have an idea and will make it this and make a selection. On a engineering firm. Uh, the, the, the additional cameras upgrades, we, we envisioned these cameras to be standalone. And to be high-speed, that would allow then for the police department to come and um and view. We're not going to be able to hook these into our existing system as of yet, but that would be uh further along in a, in a, in a second phase, working in concert with the police department. And all the cameras we're installing. Um. The City Hall Roof, correct, Jamar, we are in phases of that uh because of how large of a, of a, of a property at City Hall is. We've actually had engineers on site working um with uh Chico. And uh we should have uh the construction project on the street within, within the next two to three months. Um, other than that, I would, um, I defer, Jamar, you, you're doing well.
Um, any questions, members of council for public properties? Which have a combined total of five million, seven hundred fifty thousand in allocations uh for twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, hey, Jeff here, I'm, I'm not at a place to comment a lot, but I'm listening, yeah, I might have a follow-up. Comment or two, but I'll send it via email, I just want to let you know, thank you.
Thank you, sir, uh councillor Sepeta Freitas, and then councillor Reed.
Thank you, any money being allocated to maintain, sustain those properties along country that the city owns?
Um, um, not, not specifically, um, but I uh, I was very excited to see the draft uh of the RFP. I hope I'm not getting out ahead of anyone, um, my colleague Jamal. But um, but uh that draft RFP is coming, um, it's very, very well presented. Um, and I, I, I expect it to be out uh before the end of the month, actually. RFQ, I should say, is a, it's a request for qualification that proposes.
What about, was it Never Sink Pool? There was a, a pool in question, I think in Marcia's district. Uh, well, yeah, anything being allocated to that to, I'm not sure if we ever got an estimate of what it would cost to restore the pool or to create something different in that space?
If, if I may, um, that's another um. Conversation we should have in terms of pools, pools now, everybody reads about the shortages of lifeguards. Um, and because of, of the years of neglect on some of our pools, just like where we're going through Schlegel Pool now, the total neglect. Is, it's rather expensive, uh, the pool that's near uh Marcia's house. Um, it, it, it would cost uh four million, maybe more to restore and maybe a hundred kids a day. So there's gonna be a lot of um, having that, do an understanding of what is there. I um, I would rather defer that to administration in terms of having conversations. Um, amongst administration and council in terms of what you would like to allocate.
And Johani, I, I thank you for the mention of that. I think there are some other projects that aren't going to fall under the capital budget that we maybe need to look for planning for the future. With the understanding that as we move out of Act forty-seven, we are not going to have the commuter tax that's helped to support this budget. So then it gets to be tough decision-making, that property is owned by the city now and certainly needs to be looked at. Hey, Johani, do you still have a question or?
Being to put my hand down, sorry.
That's okay, that's hard to do with the technology. Okay, gentlemen, where are we at with completing the review here?
I have a question.
Oh, Donna, okay, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Question, why um I see zero, zero dollars um allocated regarding greenhouse repairs? Is it in good shape? What is going on with it?
The greenhouse, uh, we have been able to determine that it needs extensive repairs.
Are we looking at ARP funding for that or?
Working with Kyle, uh, we have um, en- engaged Cedarville Engineering. To give us a basic assessment of what is there. Um, rough numbers, we are four to five hundred thousand dollars. And no matter what we do, if there's any grants, every grant that would be gained needs to have ADA compliance. And that building does not have that, nor is there any parking associated with it. We've been in conversation, as everyone knows, with the county um and making it a, a central food location. Um, the, as a backstop, uh, the heating system, the cooling system, the plumbing, uh, the uh. The shell needs to be reworked, the stone needs to be redone, uh, there's, there's quite a bit, I'm sorry. There's quite a bit of work that needs to be there, but we are in that process now, Donna.
Did not, did that not come under the uh master plan for City Park, because we have the City Park Master Plan?
I don't know, that is.
Should be a reference or somebody should be looking back at that as well. I mean, it's, and I know we don't want to get too far, because we're going forward on this, but I think we need to have discussion about the greenhouse extensively.
The greenhouse will need quite a bit of money, and we do have commitments from USDA. Um, to move forward, we just need to understand what the costs are now. Because if we need to put additional parking in that it's ADA compliant, uh, which we will need to do, it's, it will be cumbersome. So we just, we need to understand what the building is first.
So you're saying it's being considered as a food, food drop-off?
As we mentioned, not a food drop-off, they were um USDA, um, as we, as I made mention in a, in a previous meeting that uh we met with the county. Uh, and their sustainability folks, they, the county actually approached us with USDA. Um, about using that uh some, somehow, some way. And there has been other people also that um were thinking of exploring um opportunities for few, for food there. It's just.
Growing, growing food, you're saying growing food?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Vegetables, if you will.
But I, and I agree, as far as, this requires a lot more in depth. Uh, I see that Michelle put on uh the chatroom, the greenhouse is part of the Conservation District Project. So I would really think there are some major things that aren't being uh, under this capital improvement budget that we need to have discussion about at a later point.
Sure.
Because I, I think there are some funding needs for city-owned property. And it's not to be able to take away from all the work that's been put in the capital budget, it's just there's so much out there that needs to be done, and the greenhouse is one of those.
That has an historical ha- aspect to it as well, so.
Right.
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
So I, I too have questions, I was taking notes, which I'll submit, um, because I don't want to take up more time on um what may or may not be here as major projects under capital improvement. However, the one thing that I would really like to request is, you know, we're looking at, I believe it's five million under public property. Uh, is it possible uh at some point to categorize specifically what falls under the? Let me see if I'm gonna say this correctly, the, the responsibility solely of the city. Uh, and other public properties then that might be in a partnership or an agreement with other entities or other organizations. Authorities, commissions, organizations, et cetera. Um, I don't know if that is, you have that, if you don't, I would love to see that at some point. Because I see five million dollars as a heavy expenditure for us uh with these public properties. Um, and I know that, you know, some of these areas we're working towards helping um these other entities or partners better sustain. Um, or take on the stewardship, uh, so I'd just like to see that breakdown if possible before we formalize the budget.
Is it? Respectfully, councillor, is it possible to be a, any more specific, I'm not, I'm not clear, so pause.
Yeah, okay, so, so for example, let me, let me just look at something, um, so, wait.
No, I just wanted to show you, though, I think part of what I'm hearing from you, for example, recommission facilities.
Right.
Aren't necessarily ours, we've uh set aside under the rescue plan funds, two million to go towards helping them with their facilities.
Correct, so I would like to see it itemized exactly like you just said, like recommission, right? That would fall under one category where that is an entity in which the city partners with a commission. As opposed to City Hall, which is City Hall, right? So nobody else's responsibility except ours uh um as, as a public property. Does that help clarify?
Yes, if I may, Lucine, um, we've had conversations um and uh working with the Rec Commission and other entities that. Uh, like Rotary Park and or other locations, and it seems as though the trend was previous until Mayor Moran's administration was for people to do the stuff on their own. Because they didn't get uh any responses back for a long, long time, and people took it upon themselves to do their own work. And I know um it can be sometimes very challenging on our side. And especially if um, if, if, if buildings are not to the standards of what we would like. And I know we've had some preliminary conversations along that line internally. Um, I know we can do that um at a later date and um provide information, Lucine, absolutely.
Yeah, thanks, I, I'd like to see that, and then I just want to say I'm happy to see uh the carryover of a hundred thousand dollars for the signage. Because I know that I was able to sit in one or two of those uh meetings early on, um, and how critical it is to um dedicate time um and creativity. And of course, funding to the entry points of the city for our gateways, uh, you know, that's absolutely very, very important. So I'm glad it's being carried over, I hope that we're able to, you know, have the capacity and time to, to utilize those funds. And highlight our gateways, because that sign looks really nice on the Penn Street Bridge.
So guys, I just would like to make a real quick comment, um, obviously, this is another robust capital plan. Um, obviously, we've gotten a lot of revenue from the computer EIT tax, and uh I guess that's gonna go through next year. Um, but the goal is to try to get that extended, because we've been able to get a lot of capital projects done in the last five or six years, a lot more than we've ever. Into, so, it out, because to the general public, not only in the city, but outside, it does go to good use, uh, just. Understand that, hopefully our state legislators or workforces making that a more permanent thing for the city. Thank you.
Um.
Johnny.
And Jamar, yes, I'm just curious from, I mean, two thousand nineteen, you were on in two thousand nineteen. I remember we had like a list of capital improvement projects, um, I forget the number of total projects we had identified, but I do remember that. I think we had accomplished maybe two out of uh the, the total, I'm just curious, like, where are we today?
Um, we're, we're getting.
Been completed.
So we're, we're getting more done is the short answer, and that review should be forthcoming from uh PFM. Um, and then before the end of the year, I should say. Part of why um, uh councillor, and I said this at the top of the hearing portion before you joined. So in twenty twenty-two, we are allocating more um money for projects than we have revenue to cover. So that we can attempt to complete more projects. Um, we've previously been constrained, at least since uh I came on, by trying to balance the capital fund, um, just like we balance the general fund. But after speaking with Gordon, um, he relieved us of uh that concern. Because his contention is at this point, we should be over-budgeting on expenditures for capital so that we can get more done. Um, because we've built up reserves and are not spending that down in a um efficient amount of time. So the short answer, you'll see, um, as you comb through this document, for example, I'm at row one oh five, uh, City Hall plaster repair. That project is complete, City Park Basketball and Tennis Court repairs, that project is complete. Third and Spruce Hockey Rin- repairs, that project is complete. Um, the security cameras at City Hall was completed uh last year. Um, the Northwest Library HVAC uh kind of uh replacement was also completed. So what we try to do is move the completed projects to the bottom of the list, so they're not like. So what we try to do is move the completed projects to the bottom of the list, so they're not like out of sight, out of mind. Um, and we still have more work to do in cleaning up this document to move. Again, like projects that I mentioned, City Park, the plaster and chambers, moving those to the bottom of the list. So you can see in its totality how many projects we're actually completing, um, and accomplishing.
Jamar, I have, uh, maybe, uh, Stan can better answer this, but with the supply. Chain being so interrupted, how is that going to impact us to be able to, we're have a very aggressive list? Of projects, you might not be able to predict this, but do you see it impacting us being able to carry out these pre- capital projects?
Uh, yes, um, matter of fact, we had an issue on a circulating pump, a, um, for an air conditioning system. And by the time, uh, we got back to the, which was a matter of a day to the contractor and he put the order in the next day. The price escalated ten percent and went out to fourteen weeks delivery. Uh, yes, we are, we are finding, um. Done. Some very interesting, um. Very interesting logistics challenges right now, and so that's part of our, um, management.
And, uh, Marsha, it's also part of why we want to be more aggressive in getting projects out to bid. Um, so that we can hopefully get in line for products and services.
And to have as many as bid as possible, so if one doesn't work, you can keep on moving ahead. Johani, did you have another question?
There goes my hand again, sorry.
I know, you just can't keep it down, that's all right. Uh, uh, Lucine, you had a question?
I just want to point something out, which is very exciting to me, since we're talking about what's complete. Uh, I just saw the, uh, South Fifth Street Vault project and there, there, there should be a big bolt complete there, guys.
Um, I boasted about that when the downtown center conference was here. And I was like, hey, by the way, we've removed that vault and this street has not been accessible for over ten years, you wouldn't know it, but. We actually accomplished something, yeah, uh, a lot of cleanup on this list and I will, um, I will make that adjustment.
Jamar and I have, I've been working on this list, this is, um, this is a, uh, a very. This is a final draft, if you will, for presentation, we went through it. A month ago and this is for your, your display as well, but, um. Tim Croll worked extremely hard with Fred Latchett on this, getting it done. Um, I have to commend both Fred and Tim Croll, hard, hard work.
Thank you, and if I could, uh. Um, respond, just the one thing, um, Council President Waltman mentioned. You know, as we get ready to exit Act forty-seven, now is a great time. Um, for, uh, respectfully, everyone on council to do a letter writing campaign to the legislature. On both our, uh, county delegation as well as, um, the House and Senate Speaker. Um, at a, at a recent, uh, uh, municipal leadership conference in Lancaster. That the managing director, fire chief and I were at, um, the House Speaker was there speaking. About things that, you know, they have going on, um, but he, uh, he gave an anecdote. That the major point of it was, don't discount the value in picking up the phone and calling your legislature. Legislator as well as writing a petition, particularly en masse, um, on issues that are important. And I think this is a really important one, continuing that commuter tax.
So maybe what we need to do is, uh, prepare some talking points specifically about. Uh, the commuter tax and just so that all council members can independently take that on. It's really important because we won't see this happen if we, uh, don't act on, uh, proactively the commuter taxes. Council President said, it will go away and we won't be able to move ahead on any of the unmet needs here that we talked about.
And, and, and I didn't see it in the paper and I have to look it up, but one of my colleagues I spoke to. From Harrisburg mentioned that they were able to secure it, um, permanently. I thought it was just for their extension of Act forty-seven, but they told me it was, uh, granted permanently, which was new news to me. Um, Council President.
No. It's stuck in committee.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Okay, I thought so. No, Council President, I was supporting your comments regarding, uh, attempts to keep the commuter tax outside of Act forty-seven. And suggesting a letter writing, um, and phone call campaign to the delegation and to the speaker's office.
Yeah, unfortunately, I've had about a, a draft letter in my hand about two months, so I, I should work on one for the entire. I'm sorry.
So, Jamar.
So I would work on a draft one for the, and maybe we'll get the mayor to send one as well, so I will work on that in the coming week. And then everybody can sign it from the body.
Good, thank you, Jeff.
Um, in terms of CIP, Marsha, that's all we have for CIP tonight. Um, if you'd like, I can walk you through, um, the allocations that, uh, we drafted as a plan. For a rescue plan, if you'd like, or we can wait until those public forums for that.
What, uh, I would think, why don't we hold off on that if that's okay with the body?
Yeah, I agree. I have a question.
Yeah, Lucine?
So, um, and I think, Marsha, you wanted to, um. Start with this, kind of just the protocol and, and you know, what, what you have to share from yesterday, but. Yeah, I definitely wrote some things down going through CIP, so, um, maybe if you want to touch on that.
Yeah, I was waiting for CIP to be done, uh, if you noted, we worked off the binder for CIP. But moving forward, uh, first of all, we had a very productive conversation between the managing director. Jamar, Jeff and myself, uh, at new time today. I also reached out to several council members that I was able to get in contact with. But what we know that is really key is that we have an updated document for us to review. But the reality is that document, as far as the general fund budget continues to be updated. As we walk through the budget process, so what we've agreed to do is for council members to be able to access. Uh, through an email by Jamar and or the city website, and I'm going to put the, uh, link to that. Uh, in the chat room, that you will be able to go to the city website and download the updated PDF. That will contain what we're going to be reviewing for the budget for that evening. So it will be at least by ten o'clock in the morning, you'll be able to have a chance to review it. The components will be highlighted so that we'll all be working off the same page as an updated document. And if there are any technology issues that you might have, I know that I spoke with this, uh, the city clerk. We all have available, if you do need it, to, uh, access the iPads and if you need to be able to. Download the budget through, uh, the iPad, that will be available. I'm going to make one suggestion from personal experience, it doesn't work well to work off of an iPhone or whatever your mobile device is. The iPads are great to be able to have the budgets opened on the iPad. And to be looking at them because it gives you a really clear view of all the line items. So I'm going to suggest if anyone needs them, uh, to be able to contact the city clerk. And you will have to take the responsibility, download the documents from the iPad and connect to a wireless connection to be able to. Uh, use them, uh, but at least we'll be able to have, uh, a good way of us all being able to be updated. So I didn't know whether any questions or comments and I'm going to be putting the link to, if you. Go to, uh, the city, uh, homepage, you'll see right in the upper corner. That there is a place where you, where both us as council members and the public will be able to locate the most current, uh, budget. I don't know, Jamar, do you want to just screen share that really quickly, could you do that?
Certainly.
Okay.
So from the, uh, city website homepage.
Yeah.
After the top COVID link, on the first link you will see is a draft of the twenty-two budget, when you click that. It takes you to a loading page and then you can click the PDF, it downloads and then. Um, there you are, we will, um, we will, I'll have, uh. That this document updated based on the adjustments that we've made, um, through tonight. And that'll get uploaded, uh, tomorrow to the website, close of business. Please, um, we have a whole, a few other projects going on, but, uh, close of business tomorrow, the PDF will be updated on the website.
And so you can also be letting your constituents know that they can go to the same place to be able to see what's updated, so everyone will be. Literally on the same page as far as where we are with the budget. Johani, did you have a question?
Yes, um. Wh- when will the city website be updated, because I saw, um, I, excuse me, at some point we were discussing. Uh, or we mentioned that the city website would be, um. Upgraded, updated, and if so, where is that fund coming from, is that us, capital improvement or not?
Um, so that is an internal project. Um, if council will allow, I'd love to have our we- our new webmaster, he has a year with us now. Um, to present to you all of the hard work that it has taken him a year, um, to complete thousands of pages have been edited. Um, unfortunately, not all of council has responded on the bios, so, uh, some of your profiles will be incomplete. But, uh, the new website is ready to go live on November one.
So just to complement on that, this is going to be a very proactive, interactive website for the public to be able to access information. And I think this is the first time, as long as I've been on council, that you've been able to access a current version of the budget. In real time as it's being updated. Okay, we always worked off the binders and that was never, uh, really productive process, so. Uh, I'm hoping you all can be working through that, again, I suggest using the iPads if you can. Just so you have, almost like a book, that will be like your budget book, okay, rather than using a hard copy. Okay, any other questions, because I think we have one more component to go over, is the finance department, am I correct, Jamar?
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that, sorry, um, yes, that is correct.
It's not very long, but it's important, obviously.
Can't believe I forgot my own department. Okay, under the finance department. Um, no, uh, big fluctuation in salaries under, uh, my particular division. Um, advertising went up by two hundred fifty dollars. Uh, contracted services remain flat, conferences and training saw an increase of five hundred. Um. As, uh, things open back up, as I mentioned, I just attended, um, a conference in Lancaster. Um, travel, uh, went back up by five hundred to two thousand. Coming down to the purchasing division. The, uh, there's a decrease in rentals and leases. Maintenance agreements remains flat at fifty-five thousand, office supplies, uh, saw an increase of ten thousand. Um, the one thing to note there, the purchasing office, uh, purchases office supplies across the entire city organization. Um, in most departments, you'll only see nominal levels of funding, five hundred or, uh, one thousand, so. This, um, was to restore them back to pre-pandemic levels. Um, to cover services citywide. The accounting and fiscal management office, again, we're accounting for, uh, contractual increases there. Um, contracted services did see a bump of twenty-five hundred to four thousand five hundred. Conferences and training, I'm sorry, an increase of five hundred. And, uh, travel saw, um, it's, it's a first allotment of one thousand dollars. And that's related, um, to sending more staff to conferences and training opportunities. Under citizen service, uh, center division, again, accounting for contractual increases. Um, and no other major fluctuations with the exception of our maintenance agreements went down by five thousand. Under the information technology division. Um, we have a decrease in fees of thirty-one thousand. We also have a significant decrease in maintenance agreements of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand. So that line goes from seven hundred sixty-four thousand this year down to five hundred and five thousand next year. Um, that is through savings and, um. In their approach to the agreements that we have ongoing. Machinery and equipment also saw a decrease of forty thousand. And, um, and that's because we've moved a lot of our equipment purchases over to, uh, capital funding under the IT division. We, um, so between this year and, uh, last year, funding for the finance department is four million six hundred seventy-three thousand, four hundred forty-six dollars. Um, that includes a decrease of about three hundred forty-one thousand over the previous year. With that, I'll move over to the position listing because I do have one ask. Apologies, I hope your head doesn't spin, spin rather. Um. Uh, so my one ask, um, under this budget is a bump for the purchasing coordinator. Um, while the title says coordinator, um, it really functions, um, as a division manager. On procurement, covers every facet of our entire city organization, um, and I was. Uh, not cognizant of how low, um, the pay was for that position. Relative to similarly situated, uh, division managers across the organization, um. I would, uh, certainly provide, um, in an email details, but I, I hesitate. Um, to call out and make no mistake, I've made a list, but I hesitate to call out the salaries of the other division managers. Because my ask of fifty-five thousand is still well below, um, what, uh, similarly situated individuals are making. Um, but in two thousand twenty, that salary was budgeted at forty-eight thousand and twenty-one, it came up to forty-nine. I'm in twenty-two, I'm asking for a flat increase to fifty-five thousand even. Um, aside from that, there are no other salary changes in my department. With that, I'm open for questions. Counselors Sepeda Freitas and then Maria.
So when I, when I was looking over fringes, did we get a chance to, uh, correct and update the fringes?
Not yet, um, so to, to answer your question from last night and I left a little early apologies. Fringes cover vision, medical, dental and life insurance. We, um, as I mentioned, we met about our renewal at the beginning of October. Um, we're in the process of signing and accepting those new rates for two thousand twenty-two and then we will update them into the spreadsheet. Um. After speaking to our solicitor earlier this afternoon, I would request at, uh, next week's meeting and executive session, counselor. I can show you the, uh, fringe benefit tab and the breakdown because we do budget for that, um, itemized by each employee.
So I would like to request if possible, and I don't know, I don't know that this would be your department per se, but. Maybe HR, um, as you spoke of your division manager, who you want a, uh, an increase that measures up to. All the other division managers, you know, I agree, as I was looking at the position ordinances and the salaries and position titles. I noticed a lot of, um, discrepancies, disparity, uh, also between male and female, um, with same titles and. Males earning a little bit more than the females and so on and so forth, so I would like, and again, this could be an executive session, but as we are reviewing. Salaries, positions, qualifications, that we look at all, everyone's salary, right? And that we make them fair and equal.
Uh, happy to engage in that effort, but I would just. Uh, send a word of caution, um, because of, you know, a full deep dive into that. Um, could potentially cost the city a lot of money north of what it's currently spending. Just a word of caution. Which would mean tax increases.
Yeah, and I want to be careful, everyone, regarding an executive session, I know you talked to the solicitor, I mean, if he wants to give us an update, but. Even though some of that information is pertinent to each employee, I, I do believe most of it's public information, so we have to be careful. And maybe I'm wrong, so, uh, before we would go into an executive session, I would want a little clarity from, from the solicitor.
Yeah, and I, we're not talking about doing it tonight, I don't think, but, uh, the, uh, I think some of the, uh. To the extent that we'd be diving deep. uh, to the extent that we'd be diving deep into, into individuals uh benefit plans, that certainly person uh would fall under the personnel uh exception to the um uh Sunshine Act and um typically, and they would also be under the right to know all exempt from disclosure.
And you, and you may, just for public information as well, Jamar, we could use some sample um employees, meaning fictitious ones, you know, with similar information, just to demonstrate how the process works. I mean, that might be something to consider as well.
Absolutely. Uh, Maria.
Oh, thank you, Jamar. Um, I know my, the Boyer for the City Audit Office was presented last week, but I would like to ask council and also the administration if a part-time position could be added in. Uh, the purpose of this is because I would like to hire like a part-time senior college student that can take uh the leave, we all did daily routines, and the city audit on the audit on coordinator can concentrate more on doing audit. And that's the purpose of, for me asking for the part-time position. To be
I make a suggestion at this point. I think what has happened, and understandably so, is we go to the position spreadsheet, and then it opens up the whole, let's talk about all the positions. I would think that what we want to do is we're going through departmental reviews, but then we want to revisit some of the questions about the positions overall. Uh, if anything goes into executive session, and if there's anything, as we're going through the departments that you want to uh put in writing as requests for positions, I think that's uh right. I just don't want to do a real deep dive into all the positions at this point, just because we're looking at that point in the spreadsheet. If, if that makes sense to you, I think it requires another point of time that we really need to uh delve into that a little deeper.
And also, I, I'd want to point out that uh our personnel code actually requires when we are discussing salary increases uh that uh are above a, a, a certain amount, that there is, it is supposed to be an executive session by our own ordinance.
Okay, thank you very much, Fred. Okay.
If there are no other questions for finance, um, that's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Okay. So that concludes our budget review to tonight. Uh, just to remind folks, if you feel you need additional technology, uh, call the city clerk's office as far as accessing the iPad. Uh, and then remember to download from the city website the most current version uh of the budget which we posted.
It's me, Marsha. Um, I would like to know if the position could be added, the part-time position to my budget.
I, I think, Maria, at this point, that's not, we're not there to discuss that particular piece. So we're going to come and revisit all the positions, okay? It's not, I don't think we'll be answering the question to your particular request tonight. Not to be disrespectful, but I think we need to circle around that and have that on one of the requests that we need to look at as far as updating the budget. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, you know, because uh that we go deep in the budget, and then we forget about it. So I just
Now, that's why we're, we're establishing a parking lot and written questions. The way the questions are going to be grouped together is by department, so that rather than piecemealing everything, we look at. And I know this is uh hard to structure sometimes, because I think we're used to responding to whatever in front of us. We're going to be taking all the questions for all the departments and grouping them together and revisiting them after we get done with the, the first round of review of the budget. So, Lucine?
Thank you, Marsha. I just want to make sure that my questions from this evening are distributed correctly. Am I to send them to you or to? Who, whom should I send them to?
Send them to Linda.
Send them to Linda. Very good. Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, and if you, feel free to copy to all of us, so we know what questions are out there. Okay, but there will be a process for getting them responded to.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, and I made an informed choice, by the way, consulting with the Council President and the administration, that if we start trying to answer each question as it comes up, we'll never get through the whole budget. We need to get through it first and then revisit. Johani?
For today, because today was a smooth dive into the budget, so I appreciate it today. So I just want to say thank you.
Okay. I think we all learned through experience, and any suggestions are welcome. Uh, unfortunately, I wasn't able to get a hold of all of you by phone, but I will continue to attempt to do that, just to make sure we're all neat, going in the direction we need to. So considering that it is a little after seven, and some of us probably need to have our dinners and, and return to our families, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Marsha.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Good night.